All right, any need to amend the agenda?
I would like to add an executive session for personnel.
All right, and we have to add a transfer station onto old business. Anybody have anything else? We have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion. Go down to members.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, meeting minutes of October 4th. We do have extended minutes dealing with the transfer station that weren't in the original minutes. Did everyone have a chance to look at those? So I guess I need a motion to add those to the minutes.
So.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Actually, you don't need to.
No?
They're signed.
No.
Oh, okay. Anything else on the minutes? Confirm anyone? No? Town manager report?
Okay. Let's see. Met with Bruce Martin from V-Trans and Patricia Shad from Fosn O'Neil on October 10th. They're in town to start right away discussions with a couple of property owners for segment two. They did state that the landowners they met were positive about the project, so again, we've offered services to help them any way we can, so hopefully this goes that way for all of them. Had a follow-up meeting with Rob Wright at V-Trans to discuss the possibility of the town petitioning to take over the designated Village Porsona Route 7, segment two. Still negotiating construction match amount. We're looking to try to get 5% instead of the 100% we'd have to pay for currently for water and sewer, so this will be 5% of the total segment if we own it, pre-construction. We're actually hoping to get new estimated construction costs to calculate, so we could calculate the 5% of the total versus the 100% for the water and sewer. So, one of the things I learned when the 5% was matched was done on another one of the segments, it was because it was a Class 1 and not a state road. So there were no other Class 1 highways at the time, so we would be the second one for a Class 1 if we do it. So we're hoping that we can get that same, you know, buy-in on that. Ann and I have been meeting with department heads. Sean and Chad are here tonight to work on numbers for the FY25 budget. So Water, Sewer, and Highway will be presenting their budgets at tonight's meeting. That'll come later. So we've received payment from Dollar General for the ditch and culvert work that Chad completed at the intersection down here on Plains Road and Route 7. And actually, their corporate office was great to work with, and we appreciated their prompt payment. They really were. They were, we had, it was a great thing. I have two other things I want to add on, too. This morning, Sean and I met with folks up at the Police and Fire Academy. They wanted to open discussions on, talking about sewer connections up there again, and where we were at with timeframe for segment two. And we talked with Craig at Otter Creek Engineering about getting a T put in on Furnish Road anyway, so, but it seemed like, and Sean can certainly fill in the gaps if I miss something, but that, you know, there, things move a little bit slower there, and that probably five years would be a good timeframe for this stuff to move forward with them as well as us. So, I think the meeting went well this morning. It was, yeah, it was definitely more positive, and it sounded like it's positive and, you know, outside of the academy up in Montclair, too.
That's good.
And, one other thing that happened after the board packets went out Friday, I received a call from the West Rutland Town Manager to ask if we'd be interested in putting in, like, a bid or price to do policing there. So Chief Warfel and I have started conversations with, just to see what we, what the town would need and how much, like, West Rutland would be interested in funding for us to do this. And we also discussed the need to talk with Proctor. I know that that was discussed here a few years back, but to have both towns and, you know, understand that there needs to be, you know, some, some funding from them that we just couldn't self-fund this whole thing. So, there's not really much to bring yet. I, you know, I'd like us to talk with the other town managers and have Chief Warfel involved with it, and we can fine-tune it and, you know, bring it to the board, but this could be a good thing. You know, we're just gonna see what, how much the other towns, if Proctor's interested, you know, what they wanna, what they wanna spend on it. So, I guess the Sheriff's Department is having a hard time finding folks to work, so they're, they're, you know, they're kinda downsizing some stuff, so. More to come on that, and, you know, obviously, it'll need board approval before, you know, anything happens, but, so hopefully, I'll have more to come with that at our next meeting, too. Rec news. Our rec director, Liz, is now certified bone builder instructor. Classes will be offered at here, right in this room.
Oh, really?
For seniors at no charge, so, or anyone can come. Additional events for the senior community organized with local organizations, movies, matinees, boy, I said that all wrong. There will be additional events for the senior community organized with local organizations, movies, bird walks, et cetera. The Otter Soccer Jamboree was canceled due to a lack of volunteers. This has started to become a problem. Liz had to really round up troops to have, find coaches for basketball this year, too. She's still looking. Pittsburgh Spooktacular Halloween event is on October 29th at the rec area from 1:00 to 5:00. Discussings with local businesses and proprietors. We've been to working on increasing economic development opportunities. Liz and I have been meeting with a few business owners in town to see what their wants and needs are. Basketball season is approaching fast. As she says, in need of coaches for U6, U12 boys and girls team. And my rec, we're still, Liz and Ann are actually taking the reins on this. They've had a lot of setup meetings, remote meetings, so should be launched by the end of the year. There's kind of a series of, like, we, yeah, and then other ones where finance will get involved, so, you know, bookkeepers and town clerk will have an opportunity to meet with them, too, so, but it's moving along. And that is all I have this evening in my report.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Dave? Any select board member remarks? Any public comment?
I had a question about the transfer station.
Oh, we're gonna be discussing that. That's gonna be on the, on the agenda.
So, you know about the Facebook page post?
Yes.
Okay. We got kinda confused when we saw it, so.
The Pittsburgh community Facebook page?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did see some of the, yeah. So, I know, there were some, that's, yeah, we're gonna try to clear that up tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Old business, discussion on solar siting and enhanced energy plan. Did you look into the ordinance, right, you looked into the ordinance piece?
So I did, and actually, I gave Mark everything I had, so.
Oh, okay.
So I did do some research on ordinance versus the plan, and from what it appears, like, ordinances were done pre, when, pre-energy plan, when the act was, Act 174. So towns did it as a stopgap. They're, and I actually talked with our town attorney on this, too, to see if, you know, ordinance versus plan, what would be, and he's like, they're not even gonna look at an ordinance if you do it, you gotta do the energy plan.
Yep.
So, that's really where we are with that.
Okay.
I think that needs to be a decision that the board needs to make on what to move forward with, so.
Yeah, and I don't know if we have any, anything else more tonight, though. I do feel like last meeting, we kinda got off, it went off.
Keyed a little bit.
You know, 'cause I thought we were all on the same page about moving forward with the enhanced energy plan and asking the planning commission to do that, and then...
'Cause we've gotta have a say in it, if we don't.
It's, I mean, that's just what's required by the state, so.
Well, and there were two-
I don't know if it matters if we like it, so, is it or not, it's what's required.
And there were two planning commission members here that recognized that things have changed drastically and that we need to do this in order to even have a say in anything.
Right.
So, we need to do it.
Yeah. So, what would be, I mean, is that something we would have to vote on, to just ask, just ask the planning commission to go ahead and do, or?
I think a motion would probably be a good thing, and one is, like, if this is the case, like, I have two grant opportunities I can do before the end of this month, which is approaching fast.
As I know, November 1st, right, is the due, is the due date for that grant?
Right, so, like, the zoning bylaw one, which you guys already approved for me to go forward with, and then I'm just trying to meet with Jeff to get some stuff on him, with him on that. But there's that municipal planning grant, and it was told by me from folks at RPC that if we incorporate this energy portion in it with our new town, with the town plan rewrite, there will be, we will be, the consideration will be better for us to get funding for that, so. And I think we're, I think we're two years out for our town plan to be renewed, so it's probably time to really start getting that stuff in order.
25, is that what you said, Ann?
And I know that, oh, I can't think, there's a new guy from RPC that's coming to the next planning commission meeting, so, you know, probably gonna attend that one with him, just so they can go over what, but things have changed a lot since it was done last.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know, like, I think you and Ann attended that, the Home Act yesterday, right?
Yes.
And that's got a lot to do with our zoning now, too, with, you know.
It was a little confusing, but I know they're posting, I did, they didn't, did they post the slides yet? I didn't see it in my email.
I have the slides.
Oh, you do?
They put them in the chat, and you had to save them.
Oh.
So I saved them all, so I can email them to you.
That'd be great, 'cause I was trying to take notes, but the guy was talking really fast. So.
So, and I think, I think Rick had actually brought that up at the last select board meeting, too, that with all these new changes for housing and everything, that we really needed to get regulations caught up in town, so we weren't in trouble.
Yeah, 'cause it seemed very clear that if we don't address any of our zoning, the state will do it for us.
Yeah.
To push affordable housing.
Some of it's already in effect, and some of it we only have until, I think it's December 2024, to have in effect for our town, or we lose out on having a say by the sounds.
Right.
The guy can talk very fast, and, like, they were-
Not broadly, but within village, village centers, so, I mean, that still does affect us, you know, but that's, you know, cities and village centers and that sort of thing. They're just gonna kind of basically do away Act 250 altogether to kinda encourage denser So, do we wanna discuss more of the, whether we wanna ask the planning commission to go ahead and do that? I feel like we've kinda flip flopped back and forth on that, so.
Yeah, of course.
I mean, I think if that's what's required for us to have any, any say in, you know...
I'd be in favor of doing it, I guess.
Thoughts?
Well, we've had Butch, who's a representative, tell us that we had to.
You really have to.
Now, we've had clarification.
Town managers, you should.
Granted, I wasn't, because, I could've been in the meeting last time because you didn't discuss what I thought you were gonna discuss, but I did overhear some of it, and the ordinance thing that was talked about, we know that is not correct anymore. It was at one time, but it's not anymore. So, I, I think we've got to, if we're gonna have a say, otherwise, we're gonna have no say.
We won't even be at the table.
And we just, you know, they need to, you know, be careful how they write it, that's all.
Right. Agreed. Joe, what do you think?
Well, we got, don't wanna drag our feet too much and then have stuff rammed down our throat that we're not happy with.
Right.
You stay on top of it. Whatever it takes to do that, I think we need to be ready for it.
Yeah.
Is that, is that the planning commission's responsibility, or is it ours to initiate? And what is the, do we, this board refer to the planning commission to go after it, or are we supposed to pick it up?
So, you guys, the select board would eventually have to approve it. We're gonna have to have hearings because you're, you know, changing your town plan, so.
But the planning commission will-
Right.
Put them there, the ones that do it.
Make a motion, we have the planning commission.
That's their job.
With help, if the, if the grant gets approved or awarded to the town, then there's, actually, we could put an RFP out for, for help, or, you know, utilize the regional planning to help rewrite that, too, so, yeah.
All right, well, we did just have a motion to ask the planning commission to start on the enhanced energy plan. We have a second?
I have a second, Ann.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, alcohol consumption on town?
What, what about these grants?
Oh.
Well, you already gave me authority to move, so.
Yeah, we already-
And if we wanna, if we do the enhanced energy plan, we might as well move forward with the grant, so.
Well, okay, I just, it's been brought to my attention by a planning commission member that that planning grant has some pretty serious strings attached to it. I don't know, so, I have no reason to doubt what this person told me, and I, if, if we take, from what he told me, if we take the grant, then we're forced to put, like, six houses on a postage stamp.
That's part of the Home Act.
That's part of the Home Act, yeah, that's the state.
And that wouldn't, that would be, like, the planning grant would be for the town plan, not for zoning, so that would be a little different.
So, yeah, zoning would be separate.
Yeah, so.
No, but I, okay, maybe he was-
Yeah. If it's awarded to the town and the town decides not to take it, we don't have to.
You don't have to.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I guess there's no harming going for it.
Because the board would have, you know, have to sign off on it in the end, anyway.
Exactly.
I'm sure there's gonna have to be a resolution at some point for it.
So, before we sign off, we need to know all the details.
All the strings.
Okay, I'll be fine with that.
Check all the strings out.
Yes.
Great.
Okay.
Sometimes they hide a few.
They do. All right, so, yeah, rec area alcohol consumption policy that we discussed last meeting?
So, we wasted no time and decided to rewrite the policy. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
And it basically stemmed out of, you know, what we talked about the last meeting, with not having police-
Yep.
-at the event, and we tried to pick, you know, most of our public areas here and just what folks need to do in order to get permitted and everything.
Yep.
So.
We'll talk a good policy.
Yeah, fine to me.
Okay.
They mostly adopt that policy.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, Veterans Day ceremony?
I might pass this off to Ann, see how she's here, if that's okay.
That's fine. Liz and I have been working on it together, with reckless, not town clerkless, and we have, we have a call into the gentleman that was recommended at the last meeting. I haven't heard back from him yet, and we're waiting to hear back from the elementary school on what songs they're gonna sing, but everything else is pretty much finalized. We have the minister to do the invocation and benediction. Boy Scouts are gonna come and do the pledge, and we have high schoolers singing the National Anthem and doing taps. So, we've got a mixture of people from the community participating in it.
Great.
Great.
Okay, transfer station.
So, as we all know, there was some discussion on Facebook, and some folks were not happy about, I guess, how this went out, so, we did do a little pamphlet that was asked to be handed out at the transfer station, and I guess there was some surprise, so that's one reason why Ann and I reviewed the Zoom from the last meeting and tried to sort of get the minutes for that discussion a little more, a little more, what am I thinking of? Substantial, I guess, because there was, Monday morning, I had a call saying, well, these don't show up in the, so that's what that stemmed from. As you know, like, well, the last meeting, I brought up why we were having this discussion, and that, you know, we've been running in the red. There were a couple of things that were asked. I know there was one to ask to see what town-wide pickup would be, just what Proctor does right now, they're spending about 100, just under $150,000 a year for trash and recycling to be picked up, and what are they, eight miles or whatever town, size of town is, so, you know, I'm sure that that would be significantly more here.
What, about 63 miles of road?
It's quite a bit.
Like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, looking at projections, too, like, if we continue to go the way that we're going now, with the way it's budgeted, and that recycling now has doubled, and what it costs us to get rid of it, we'd be looking at putting a significant number in next year's budget to cover that cost if it's covered by the taxpayers. The other option is, is outsourcing it, to look at what we talked about, too, like, seeing if, you know, there are some companies that run transfer stations where, basically, we'd get out of the business and let them run it and maintain it. Couple other things that, just in research, and Alicia and I had talked about this earlier, too, like, Rowland County Solid Waste down on Gleason Road, you know, you can go down there and get rid of your stuff for less because, obviously, there's no hauling charge involved. So, there are some options, but I guess the, you know, the board needs to decide whether or not, we, you know, we probably shouldn't be running a deficit every year, and it's been significant, if we, you know, make the town budget, fund it, or raise fees, which nobody wants, or put an RFP out to see if, what's out there and who might wanna run a transfer station. So, those are, that's what I've come up with. I don't know if I have any other stuff that you folks haven't seen. I mean, even right now, we're, you know, just, Ann pulled numbers for me today, and our expenses, just the share, $25,000, and our revenue is 10, so.
Yeah.
And I think there's a $4,100 bill for Casellas, and tonight, you know, so it's, it just shows, it's getting costly.
Yeah, it's getting worse.
And then I forgot that I had done this, and I talked to Mark Shea at the Solid Waste District, he's like the, I don't know, if the commissioner, he's the boss up there. I asked him back in August what his thoughts were on us, you know, leasing or something, and actually, his, I have, I printed the email out, and he said leasing is easier for the town, it would be good to ensure the town is protected from all the bad things that could happen, and as in a town north of us, the leasing agent would still need to follow the management plan that's in place, that, you know, we have to do that every however many years with the state, and, so, that's the research I've found on this.
Okay.
Can I make a comment? I would've been here for the meeting for this if somebody had let me know what was going on.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I had a lot of complaints on the flyer, and everybody wanted to ask this question and that question. I told them I had no information, and they were not happy about that. The way it's set up on that flyer would never fly because you'd have to have a third person, because we have anywheres from two to 10 cars in there at once unloading their recycling into the chute at the same time. There would no way we'd be able to keep track of how much was going in. It's hard enough to keep track that they don't put in stuff that isn't supposed to go in there. And they were complaining about the dollar, $1.50 charge for the bags. The only way we could do that would be through punch cards, 'cause we can't take cash, and they would not pay a check for a dollar bag. And a lot of people don't have checks anymore.
True.
All they have is debit cards, so we'd have to either punch, make new punch cards for that, and have a debit card machine. And I don't think that's the way to go. And I do have, if anybody, I know you guys don't go down to Dunk Lunch, but we have hours at a time that are completely packed in there. Sometimes we're up to the gate, just people unloading. I think your best way would be to go is to, something that was mentioned to me, charge them for the garbage at four bucks or even five bucks a bag, and just let them keep doing the recycling. Right now, I've got a lot of people, 50% of the people that I talk to said they're just gonna put it in the garbage, and then others say they're gonna burn their cardboard and boxboard and paper. And I had others say, well, it's probably gonna end up, most of it's side the road.
That's, that was discussed.
It was discussed.
It says we have to recycle, but they don't say that we don't have to pay for it.
Hmm.
And I did not know, I've been here five and a half years full-time, and I was never told we were running in the red. Never. Nobody has ever mentioned that to me. John Haberstock didn't. I didn't find out about that till this week. I keep it running smooth as I can down there, but I don't know what else to tell you, but I had a lot, lot of complaints, a lot of people today, tonight, and I, I ran out of those flyers, so I didn't pass out anymore. Because people were coming in that have heard it, well, they said they saw something on Facebook. I haven't seen it.
I didn't see it either.
But they don't wanna lose a dump. They can go down to Hubbard's and pay $3.50 a bag for their garbage, or they can go to Rowland County Squast and pay close to that, but...
And what are we charging, $3 a punch?
We're charging $2.50.
What's a punch?
$2.50.
Huh?
It's $2.50.
$2.50 per punch?
And a lot of them said they wouldn't mind it going up, to cover both.
Why the hell are we doing it way under?
So, talking with Casellas this week, too, like, they run one down in, it's in Wallonford, a clearing, I can't remember which town, they're $5 a bag.
That's what we should do. I mean, that certainly would start up the hill to being solvent.
So, that would end up costing folks more than $2.50 a bag for garbage and a dollar or $1.50 a bag for...
Well, you eliminate that one if you're gonna charge more on the other one.
So you'd just be charging $5 across the board.
Yeah.
And then you've got people that bring in just recycling. They've got a permit just for their recycling.
Right, so they're not paying.
They're not paying, would have to-
Maybe.
-get punch cards.
Get a punch card for that.
And, it's like now, I have to figure, on some of the garbage, I have to figure, would this fit in a bag? Or, if it's a truckload, I figure that, 'cause I have a lot of them that don't bring in their recycling only once a month. And some, like-
We need to really, I don't think we should do this tonight, myself. I think we need to study this a little more.
So, one thing that, I did talk to Wayne yesterday, or whatever, I don't know what was done in the past, and it really doesn't matter, but, I mean, I'm a little concerned that, I don't even really wanna say this, but I'm gonna, that the supervisor that runs the transfer station doesn't know where they stand financially, because I have other department heads that ask for budgets or talk budgets.
I don't know if he's a department head.
Technically, he's the supervisor of the transfer station.
But we've never asked him to come in with a budget that I would've aware of.
I would think it's been discussed.
No, we haven't, no. We haven't done.
I would think that this has been discussed through other budget seasons, 'cause this has been running a deficit for-
Never, never.
Not since I've been on.
No, we've never thought, I mean-
It's always been the town manager that told us what we should be charging, as far as I can recall, right, Joe? We've never discussed that.
What's that?
Down there, it's always, he's never come to us for budget, it's always been the town manager as far as the dump goes.
Yeah.
So, it's our fault, and not your fault, we're a town manager, but past town managers, I think we gotta put the blame on them, not on us.
Well, I think we need to figure out how to resolve this moving forward.
Well, yeah, we need, yeah, that's what I'm saying, we need to go forward, and so that we're, becomes solid.
And that's why I wanted to come tonight, because the townspeople are looking for some answers.
I know, I know.
Coming to me.
Well, you're the, you're the, you're the one.
As I've said to other folks, and direct them to me, that's what we're here for.
Yeah.
And-
As it is right now, is there any way of projecting how big, what percentage of increase in revenue it would take, what's coming in to break even, or that's not possible?
So, I can take it on last year's numbers and figure out what we're paying, what the new rates will be, moving forward, but, I mean, recycling fees have doubled, so.
Ann, do you have something to add?
You'd have to double, you'd have to at least double, and you already raised your permit fees, and people are already having a hearing, it's $30 for the permit fee, which includes one $25 punch card.
Okay.
Your punch cards would have to move to at least $50, and you're still not gonna break even. So you're at a point where your costs are outweighing-
Right.
Even with, I mean, I could do some serious number crunching in a short amount of time, but your punch cards would have to be 60, 70, 80 dollars to be able to break even down there right now, because we're gonna have to go under a new Casellas contract, which is much more expensive than the one that was signed 11 years ago.
Some complaints I've heard, too, though, and I'm one of them, I didn't complain, Some complaints I've heard too though, and I'm one of them, I didn't complain, but I've heard from other people that have their own, they pay for their own service monthly and don't get any benefit from that down there. But yet we are paying through our taxes to subsidize it, which is not right either.
Right, because we're gonna have to, I mean, if the, if it moves forward with the town run out, we're gonna have to cover that cost in our budget.
Yeah.
You know, I mean The projection this year is 45, but now it's gonna be more if we, when we sign a new contract and we've got double rates, like it's
It's safe to say that we almost have to double what we're charging now in order to break even.
And then you got the problem, people dumping it on the roads and
Well, that's another problem, but
It creates a
I know, hold on, Dave's been waiting for a minute.
Okay, so we've got, we've got two issues. We got what I think we need to do, we've got this flyer that went out. It's obviously causing a problem. We've gotta figure out what we're doing about that. That's probably needs to be settled tonight. Cause if we're gonna change that, otherwise our next meeting isn't until November after that takes into effect. So we gotta do that. The other thing I think we need to do is send out a thing and see if we can find somebody to run that dump for us so we get out of the garbage business completely and just let it be that way. I think, and there may not be anybody that wants to do it, but maybe there is and see financially as far, because our ultimate goal is to keep the garbage as cheap as possible for the people in the town of Pittsburgh. That's the bottom line.
Exactly.
And if it's cheaper to get somebody to run that dump for us and get us out of the garbage business, I think we need to do that. Maybe it won't be. We don't know. But that I think is one thing we need to do tonight. The other is we need to decide what we're doing, whether we're gonna leave this flyer the way it is, which Wayne says probably is not gonna work very well. Or we're gonna just bump up our fees in the interim until we find out if we can get somebody to run it for us. That's my opinion.
Go ahead.
I had a couple of questions. Um, for one, what are the fees that you're talking about as far as your recycling? Hauling the cans from the transfer station to wherever they're dumping them?
I'll tell you Joe. So because Casellas has the equipment down there
Over, uh
on the transfer station. So this is what the breakdown is. So for the 40 yard breakaway compactor for zero sort, it's 220 to haul, $220. $160 a ton to process. So it used to be 80.
Right.
Um, and the rental is $233 a month for the container. So for trash, the hauling is 210, 10 bucks cheaper. Disposal, it's 140 a ton and rental is 150 months for the container. So that's, and I, we have one in there.
That's for them to take it over there.
For Casellas to take it to, right.
Now what if we get ahold of Hubbard? See what they offer or another carding company.
That's what Dave just said, is let's put an RFP out to see what other companies want.
What I'm saying, still run the transfer station, but have somebody else take it out.
That's what I said.
Or what would it be to get a roll off? Maybe your own boxes and run them yourself.
But then we need a truck.
We need a truck.
Right. But I mean, what is, what would be, you know?
You guys don't let me buy extra trucks.
I might be wrong, but I think that opens up a whole new world of permitting if we start hauling our own trash. And I know that then someone would have to make sure they're part of, well, we are part of the district, but, um, I'm hoping, I'd like to, if the board would like, I'd like to have someone come next week that might be able to talk about, you know, townskeeping it versus looking at subbing it out and what the pros and cons are in both, if you're okay with that.
Dave says that we gotta act.
We gotta
Pretty soon.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think that the town of Pittsburgh wants to go into the trucking business and get all set up with equipment to handle it. Because it would only be a, a very part-time job. We don't create enough to keep a truck on the road all the time. It wouldn't be efficient at all, I don't believe. Uh, that rule, but if, if we could get somebody to come in with a a proposal to take care of it for us and manage the place. What is it, we're gonna have to pay them. What would the price be? And so can we get a price that we could compare to what we're looking at for the future cost?
We shouldn't, we wouldn't, can I, uh, we wouldn't be paying them Joe. We would lease them the facility or let them use, whatever the facility, they would all be them. We would be out of the trash business completely.
They make the money or they
They make the money or lose the money.
Not us.
That sounds aw, that sounds good as, as a board member here, but how's that gonna affect the townspeople that are using that service? Are they gonna be faced with a big increase or maybe they'll even wind up? It's hard to say. It's hard to say what you're gonna find. Can we get, can we get any projected figures so we can, can let's, well, this is what it's gonna be?
We, we can't get projected figures until we decide to put out, to bid what this will be. Then, then we can make a decision.
That's what we're
So, I mean, I'm, I'm, part of this, I'm gonna end right now. I'm gonna make a motion that we look for someone to run our transfer station for us. And let's get that part either settled or not settled right now.
Do you have a, do you have a comment specifically directed to that?
Yeah, well, uh, transfer stations that I know of that are run by companies like Wasted Management, MBI and others, they're open five or six days a week. I don't know if you, I don't know if that's a problem with the place being open that regular, cause I mean, they're certainly gonna make more money. Okay?
We wouldn't care.
But that's also something else that you might consider as well. Other town transfer stations that I've dealt with are usually open at least for three or four days a week. Where you're basically open on a half a day on Wednesday and what, all day Saturday?
Six hours Saturday.
If you expand your hours, you're gonna have more people coming and they're gonna be spending more money to get rid of their garbage. So that's something else that you also might wanna look at.
A lot of that Joe's population driven to, like, you know, I mean, Middlebury for instance, has Addison County Solid Waste District in their town. So they can be, Rutland's the same way.
Mm-hmm.
You know, Brandon's three days a week. What are we here, two?
Two, yeah.
So, but it's, it's really, it's population based. You know, like over in New York where you've got some of those bigger companies, a lot of that's county driven too. So, you know, you've got, where you can have those big, well, they're like Addison County Solid Waste, Rutland County Solid Waste. And they're gonna put it in more of the higher populated area because that's where all the draw is.
But even still, I mean, when I lived in New York in Cairo, tiny town like this, our transfer station was open three days a week. And if we went over to Catskill, that was open four days a week. So, you know, I mean, it's, cause I mean, me personally, I'm not always able to make it Wednesday afternoon. And Saturday we're doing things. So whether or not I remember, oh, I gotta go to the transfer station, I might remember on a Thursday. Damn it, I forgot to go do the garbage yesterday.
So, I mean, growing up in Addison County, most towns were one day a week and they still are, you know, and that's just because that's all the towns could feasibly do.
Right.
And the other thing is like, there is, there is option for, you know, other ways to pick up trash. Like I myself have someone come to my house and
Yeah, I, I do too, it's just easier.
Right, it's convenient. But, um, I think as Alicia said, you could go to Rutland County Solid Waste if you wanted to
Any day of the week, just about.
There's six days a week.
And there's, right. So, you know, there are the other options and almost like, I hate to say it, but it's more of a convenience to do it in town for folks and, um, but the question is like, how much do we wanna pay for it? You know, that's, or does the town wanna pay for it?
So we did have a, um, we did have a motion and a second. Was there any more discussion amongst the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, so we'll put the RFP out.
That part's settled.
Yep.
Now we need to figure out what we're gonna do with that notice. Whether we're gonna just up the punch cards. So, or we're gonna leave it as it is for another month or two and discuss it?
I think it might be easier because we've, we've, all of us in this building have tossed this idea around to actually just have a recycling punch card versus a trash card. And whatever fee it is, a dollar, a dollar fifty, to whatever, whatever, you know, we think is the right amount and just have a recycling punch card. I think we could get it made fairly quick too.
But Wayne is saying that's a logistical nightmare for them.
When you've got five or six people dropping back and forth, you're not gonna be able to. You got an eight to 10 vehicle spot.
Just like trash.
Trash.
All the bag, all the bag is, is the, the
They don't bring it in bags.
Is the, is the size of what
Yeah, there's very few that bring it in bags.
Yeah, they throw it out.
And you got one person dumping one, you got somebody else dumping one, you got somebody else dumping one, you got one guy. How is he gonna keep track of what gets dumped?
Why would you propose that it's done then?
You'd have to have a third guy, one guy on that. And one guy to float. And one guy to watch compactor. A regular compactor. You're not gonna do it with two people. I don't care how much you try. We went through this before. Pretty hard to slow the flow down to where There's no way of slowing the flow down the way that's designed. Monitor it, that's all the question. There's no way of slowing that flow down. I understand.
Yeah, cause you get times where there's you get times where one guy can handle the whole thing, no problem.
But for those parts, I can Would be one thing if all the recycling was bagged. That would be one thing. That, I mean, I'm not saying it's ideal, but when you got stuff that are, people that are bringing stuff loose and you gotta calculate what size, how many bags that would be, yeah.
Cardboard, not all the boxes are broke down because they don't have to be, because Casellas told us he could just drop them into the door. And that's what I was told to tell my customers.
My question on that is even if you gave a punch and it was actually two bags worth, aren't we still better off than we are now because we're getting something for it? And you go by one compactor and the other guy goes by the other compactor? And when you have a break, you go in and run them?
That, yeah, that still wouldn't work. Still wouldn't work. Not the way we get them in there.
Okay.
Not the way we get them in there. And if anybody wants to come down and watch on a Saturday or on a Wednesday.
Run it before.
Well, part of the Changed a lot since then. I think it's safe to say part of the problem that we're financially in the red ink is because the recyclable stuff is worthless, just about worthless. Now where a few years ago it used to have some value. Yeah.
We don't charge for it.
So that's, that's made the problem even worse. Nothing happens to make up for it. They just took it out of the general fund.
If we're gonna look into this other stuff.
I know.
I think we should see if we can get somebody else to come in and run the
But in the meantime, we need to
In the meantime, we gotta decide what we're doing.
Yeah, I mean, what's, what's another option? I mean, I
I'd recommend going up to at least $50 on your punch cards. For the first, well, do you do first in November or first in December?
Is it 30?
It's 25.
25 right now.
And going up, going up to 50 for the punch cards.
The permit will be 30.
30.
Cause a lot of them are talking right now putting their
The punch card stayed 25.
Recycling right into the garbage. And they don't mind paying any extra.
But you
They don't have to fool with it.
I know.
Well, no, and that's what's gonna happen at that in the roadside. But, okay, so a punch card has, cause it's been a while since I've done that.
Ten punches.
How many?
Ten punches.
Ten punches. So we're charging 250 a bag.
Right.
Okay. So if we go, so, and we're charging, so 25, so if we went to
Four?
To what?
Four.
So forty?
Forty or 50.
What?
They'd still pay it because if they, if they go to Rutland, they still gotta pay at least 350 at Hubbard's. I don't know what Rutland County Solid Waste is per bag. Or they go on weight.
They do both.
But I know Hubbard's is 350 a bag.
What, a four?
So when you get the permit, you get a $25 card free? What is that?
That's what it is right now.
Yeah, you pay the $30 for the permit.
Well, maybe that should be separate from the punch cards. You don't, you know.
Well, that's, that's the, with the permit.
Yeah, I know.
Punch card, yeah, the first one.
Should, if anybody wants to use a dump, should buy a permit, whether it's bringing in trash, trees, right? You don't charge for that, right?
I believe so.
No.
They bring leaves down there, they bring brush down there.
They bring their
So somebody should be able to use that and my, I haven't used it, but if I did, I should buy a permit to be, have, have the use. And if I want a punch card, I buy that separately. Otherwise, I think we're, you know, we're giving them that.
Well, it's kind of five bucks for the permit, 25 bucks.
Yeah, exactly. So the permit should be separate. I, I think for me to go dump three truckloads of brush that I just trimmed out of my yard, it's worth me 30 bucks to get rid of it.
Yeah, yeah.
To get a permit. That's all I'm saying.
What if we thought a three-week turnaround on this, the middle for an RFP and not do anything right now?
Leave it as is for now.
And see what comes to us.
Maybe that's the prudent thing to do because
Okay, but we're still gonna run in, Wayne's, okay, so this goes into effect November 1st.
Well, we can rescind that if the, I mean, I, I think
Well, no, I, I'm, yeah, I have no problem with that, but I think we need to, something needs to happen to this before, needs to happen to this tonight, whether it goes away or we change it.
I would make a, a recommendation that the board consider rescinding, charging for recycling right now. Wait till we see results from an RFP and see, because I think at three, it's still gonna be a pain to try to change anything immediately.
It's short now, yeah.
And see what comes in and go from there.
Uh, yeah, that sounds, that sounds like a good idea.
I, I will, I will make that up hand.
Can I just make a suggestion? You might wanna tell the town clerk and treasurer not to sell any permits until a, a decision has been made because people have been coming in and hounding them. They haven't sold any yet. But it's, it's coming within the week. So if we don't wanna sell those permits, we're starting
No, we're saying live alone, right?
But I'm just saying until we know, you might wanna make sure that it's clear that no permits are to be sold until a decision is made.
No, that's not where we're
Recycling permits.
No.
No, this is dump permits for next year because if you decide, you know, put out an RFP
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And you take it, you don't want to have sold the 2024 permit.
Gotcha.
And then we hand it off to another organization to run.
That wouldn't go over very big. They'd be up here wanting their money back.
So you might wanna put a stay on selling permits until a decision is made at the November 15th meeting.
No further sales, cause I'm sure they've probably done some
They have not sold a single one yet.
Well, they, they start November 1st, right?
They were supposed to start selling them now. They have them in stock. They have not sold them yet.
No, 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 but when, when do the old permits run out?
So we changed it at, and we changed
First of January.
Oh, oh, we got till January. Okay.
But they're starting to sell them now, so we need to know they're not sales.
Right, right.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
They'll still sell punch cards, but no, no permits.
Right, that, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, our contract with Casellas is up for renewal here.
Well, it's up for renewal now, but I'm, I'll call them and let them know that what we're doing. I'm sure they're not gonna pull out until we're done and they can submit an RFP.
Okay, we have to move on reasonably fast.
I bet we'd be ready to do it tomorrow.
Okay, I will make a motion that we rescind this flyer. And that we tell the town clerk not to sell any new permits. Um, until we have finalized, finalized whether, what, what exactly we are going to do.
That I think would calm people down.
Calm people down, yeah.
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alrighty then.
Keep the pitchforks away for a couple of days.
Thank you. I've been under pitchforks here for a while. We're gonna be like the government, we're gonna shut down.
Oh boy, okay.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
Alright, let's move on to new business. Um, and we'll skip on, um, to, uh, to, uh, budget presentations. We'll start with water and sewer.
Alright, so, uh, you guys want me to go over revenues first or expenses or how would you like to go? In which department do you want?
She's on page 24.
Okay, thanks, I was trying to
For water department revenue starts on page 24 of 39.
Alright, why don't you give us the good news first, the revenue?
So I can give you a whole good news if you want, or I can let Sean do it.
We're, we're gonna save the sewer till the end.
I hope that's why we're going water first.
Okay.
Alright, so with the projections of the new rates and everything, I'm reading the right number here, right? Total revenue would be about $360,993. It's up about 3.2%.
That's eliminating, um, a whole bunch of due to, due froms that are kind of redundant and a waste of time and energy and resources. So we've eliminated those. We've also decreased the amount of delinquent interest, um, due to a lot of people now paying more quickly and a lot of older delinquents having been cleaned up using LEWAP, VHAP over the last couple of years. We're finding that the penalties and interest have significantly dropped. And that will go for wastewater as well.
And, and we've been trying to really make the revenues be factual and not, you know, like really based on what we've been bringing in. I mean, I'm, I'm rather, as we're talking about the state, I'd rather see our revenue be projected at lower. So, because higher just ruins, you know, if we project a high revenue and it doesn't come in, it's just bad for the budget, so.
Alright, so move on to expenses. Go out, hit the bigger ones. So labor, we brought that up to 67,500, up about 2.6%. Knowing that we've got the annual cost of living coming as well as I do have a little bit of time that I get still from my, uh, weekend guys that have to take some classes here on, here and there. So I wanted to add a little bit extra just to weekend guys that have to take some classes here on, here and there. So I wanted to add a little bit extra just to cover them.
Also the master skills coming next year.
And the master skills rate coming next year. Let's see, overtime, we brought up just to be more factual because we know that we've got somebody working every weekend because we're manned three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So we know we gotta pay somebody to be there. Uh, let's see, next big increase that we've got on this would be medical insurance, which Ann figured that one out for me going off some projections. And for the two of us, that brings us up to about forty-five thousand, which is one of the bigger jumps, but because we were able to get rid of a few other things, it makes it a little bit easier to swallow. So that wasn't huge. Supply, what is it? News and subscriptions. We went back and looked at what it actually costs for some of the, uh,
You know how four guys instead of just two?
What it actually cost doubled it to cover all four of us. He has, by being members of Green Mountain, um, wait, uh, what the heck? Green Mountain, Vermont Roll Water, and then there's Green Mountain something or other. By being members, we get lower class rates, which cuts those class rates in half. And, I mean, four of us take one class, we'd eat the whole year's budget, basically.
Yeah, okay.
And looking at how it's trending too, like, you know, last year there was seven hundred and thirty thousand, or seven hundred and thirty dollars actual. And, you know, the budget for this year was three and they've already spent two and we're, you know, we're third in. So you know it's gonna be somewhere around six hundred by the end of the year, so.
Okay.
The other repairs and maintenance, one of the bigger ones we decided to jump because so far this year we're at two thousand dollars into repairs and maintenance and seeing is our system isn't getting any newer. We know we're gonna have more breaks, so we brought that up to ten thousand dollars. Just a rough thought on that is if we have to hire someone because say we're in Route Seven, it's beyond our capacity. You're talking a minimum of like five thousand dollars. That's half of that new budget, which would have eaten up the entire budget we had before. So don't like seeing the bigger number, but we want to bring them in line with what actual costs would be.
And last year closed that at ninety, ninety-two hundred dollars. So it's closer to ten, you know, real, reality wise.
Uh, let's see, training, now there's four of us. I brought that up to five hundred dollars. And we may or may not spend all that. I try not to limit anybody just to the hours they need for their license. If it's a training that is pertinent to your job and you think it's gonna be interesting and help you, we want you to take it because the more we learn, the better we can do. A few of the line items we did consolidate. So I'm trying to find
Telephone and communications, we consolidated. That's why you see communications at negative a hundred percent and telephone up fifty-four point seven six percent at the top of page twenty-six. Um, we're trying to make it so that there's not so many lines. Communication and telephone, to me, you're communicating, so why do you need to have two separate lines, one for telephone, one for communications? We also did that with
Utilities and fuel?
No, I think it's on wastewater.
Okay.
Wastewater had two different supply accounts and we merged the supplies into one.
New equipment, I brought up a little bit. Just because you never know when a piece of equipment's gonna fail. We may have to replace it. Like to have some money in there to do that with. New forms and clothing, put that on a pretty, now that we know what we're gonna be doing with that, that's a pretty steady number we should be able to hit. Vehicle replacement, we did try to up that to fifteen thousand, knowing that the cost of vehicles aren't getting any cheaper. We've still got five more years before we're even thinking about vehicle replacement, but I'd like to have more than enough sitting in that account to cover it and get the vehicle we, we need, not what we can afford. Which we've been good on in the past, but with the new prices, I know we're gonna need more of them there. And having a second vehicle there, it's gonna have to add a little pressure, which is
EPA testing and testing.
How much are we using that second vehicle? Are we using that quite bad?
You know, we're still between both highway and water and sewer.
No, we're splitting that kind of.
More or less, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're using it mostly, but if we needed it, it's available and
I mean, like I brought Chad a load of tailings the other day. Today it was our main vehicle because we're getting their tires switched over on the other truck.
But everything's under your, your account?
I believe so. I
For expenses, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I was gonna say, I wasn't sure if all the transfers happened, but it should be. I believe all the trucks fall under water and then there's just a transfer to from sewer.
Yes.
So therefore vehicle, fuel, maintenance, brought all those up somewhat. Just to try to be more in line on having two vehicles to cover. Utilities, fuel, just take what we had last year. Testing, that was the one Ann was saying. Um, and knowing that the state usually adds more tests to what we do as well as the prices have gone up, we brought that up from three thousand to thirty-five hundred.
Well, we took the two lines and combined them.
And two lines and combined them.
Took the bottom line on page twenty-six and the top line of page twenty-seven and combined them into just testing instead of having testing
EPA testing.
Testing periodic EPA.
That never made sense to me since everything is reported to the EPA in the end. Which brings our total expenses to two hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred, which is up three point. Did I give you the wrong number?
No, you're right here.
Oh, I'm down.
Because you have all of your loan services too. So with the new charges for water and everything, it covers all of the debt service that you see in the middle of page twenty-seven, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-five. His total expenditures only goes up about two point one two percent. So three hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-five. He should have a surplus of four thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars at the end of the year. For water.
Okay. Any questions on water?
Yeah, I've got a question on administrative fees. You've had fifteen thousand dollars and suddenly you're zero. What's the deal? Did that guy move somewhere else?
No. So we were charging an administrative fee of fifteen thousand and then they were paying us fifteen thousand. So they washed each other out. So it was a bookkeeping nightmare. It went fifteen thousand in and then flushed fifteen thousand dollars out. So we said, why are we doing this in and out thing when the net is zero? Let's uncomplicate things and just take the fifteen in and the fifteen out, out of the equation. It's less bookkeeping, it's less busy work.
So the admin fee was coming here.
It was going to the general fund as revenue. And then the general fund was turning around and paying fifteen thousand dollars to the water department, um, under a transfer. So we're trying to simplify things and make it so that the common person can look at this and not shake their heads and go, why is it fifteen in, fifteen out?
Yeah, okay.
So One thing we're like, we're technically town admin, so we sort of get to work in any department we want to, you know, pretty much anytime. So um, it's, you know, for departments to do this cross, it's kind of, it just doesn't, Ann's right, it just didn't make any sense.
Yeah, I agree.
So.
And that was, between that and consolidating them, those are what all the ones that had the zeros at the end.
Right, no, I got that part, but that one just, I didn't see where it had gone anywhere.
Yeah. No, we're just trying to simplify the entire budget. So
I get it.
Throughout this entire process, you're probably gonna have a few questions like that. You know, we used to do it this way, um, but we're just trying to save time and make everything a little bit more efficient as well, streamline.
All right, so we'll move to wastewater. My page numbers match theirs.
Yes.
So that's page twenty-seven down at the bottom. Ann was nice enough to also calculate these with what, based on our last billing, if we were to use the new rates, what we would be at, which brings your sewer charges up to three hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty, which is up about twelve point two three percent. Delinquent penalties, you figured that out? That's up fifty-two point three. That one went up.
It did go up because if people pay on a bill and they have both water and sewer, but they don't make a full payment, sewer is the last thing that's paid when you pay a water and sewer invoice. It pays all of water off first in our system and then it pays sewer. So therefore the delinquencies, penalties and interest usually fall to sewer more than water department. It's just the way our, uh, program calculates payments and penalties and interest.
If someone asked to split it up, they could though, right?
There is no way in our system when we enter the payment to say this much is to water and this much is to sewer. It just goes in as a line item under utility billing.
I think there is a way to do it. Yeah, I think there, because, well, you know, the system and it was, there's a way to do it. We'll, we'll have to look at that.
But they haven't ever done it that way.
There's definitely a way to do it.
I'm not allowed in cash receipts, so I am not sure how it would be done.
So this is the correct total revenue, right?
Yes.
So total revenue would be about three hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred and forty, which is up about seven point six two percent, which is good. That's why we raised rates, tried to bring in some more revenue. Moving to expenses, uh, labor, did the same calculations we did with water labor, a little over two percent to cover all, all of us as well as go up what we know the cost of living will be. Overtime brought it up, so it's on par with what we're paying. I don't know why we were budgeting below what we paid, but uh, next big one would be supplies. That one we consolidated.
Yes, supplies we consolidated. Um, so, supplies, and then there's another one. Two pages over.
And supplies also encompasses my, uh, chemicals and knowing there's gonna be price increases coming on that, we wanted to put a little bit more money into that line item. Repairs and maintenance, we brought that up only about five hundred. Hopefully we don't have to use all that. Seeing sewer isn't pressurized, we don't tend to have as many line breaks. More plugs and
I'm gonna knock on wood for you, Sean.
Yeah, I know. I wish I hadn't said it.
Busy, huh?
Telephone and communication we combined.
Yep, telephone, communication we combined. Training, we brought that up. Sludge removal is actually the one, and I, I'm hoping with the difference, uh, ways we've been doing some things and it's trending this way, we actually lowered that line item from thirty thousand down to twenty-five. We wanted, we've been trying for different processes down at the plant and trying to treat it a little more ourselves in-house. So crossing my fingers that we're right on that. Testing, uh, brought that up to eight, well, it was about eight thousand last year. Yeah, I was looking at the one next door. That one would be more probably.
Certification rules we upped because we have, um, four guys, five guys instead of three.
And the prices of those also went up. And then the transfers for the vehicles, we brought up. Let's see, utilities and fuel, we brought that up on par with what we're actually paying. Ann and I are doing some research into some Green Mountain power bills and I'm actually trying a few different things because I know our pump stations eat a lot of electricity. Changed some set points on one of them the other day. I want to see what that does to the electrical billing, if anything. And I also, uh, was chatting with Craig from Otter Creek Engineering. We booked at some D O controls down at the plant to help run our, our blowers and maybe be able to turn them down some at night. The original cost estimate was way too expensive to ever save us anything, but I think, I remember him saying there were some other options we could look into for that that would be more cost effective and actually save us in the end. But I want to have actual numbers and talk a little further before I actually get excited about it. We get rid of the line item below that. Do, do you want the hundreds on this one?
Sure. So our total expenditures, even with our debt schedule, is three hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The sewer fund should have a surplus of sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars that they can use towards their deficit. And that's even after paying their debts. So it's a step in the right direction.
Yeah.
And that got rid of another fifteen thou, they were getting fifteen thousand in from general fund and being charged seventy-five hundred dollars a month. We got rid of both lines so that they can stand on their own.
We did have discussion on whether or not we wanted to break chemicals out on their own just to, so that we could see it. But with the supplies line, you know, we can go into any one of these lines and expand it in NEMRIC, so it's really detailed. So we decided that was probably the easiest way to do it and
Now that I know what line item like truly fall under, it's a little bit easier knowing which one to break out.
Yeah, one thing we started doing, I don't know, I guess early this summer was when, when the guys were submitting invoices, I asked them to put, if you see in the budget, you know, there's that really long number that's underneath every line. So that's the number we use in NEMRIC. And for those guys to start looking at, like, when they would submit an invoice, write that number on it and write it on your monthly sheet before you get, you know, your, sort of following months, so you know that you've expended from that line between. And I think it's gone well.
I haven't been doing it.
Chad. Well, Sean, Sean's been doing a great job on it.
I hit the gold star tonight, I do.
Yeah, good job, Sean.
I knew that was coming from.
Yeah, if you did it, you'd get a nice maker too.
I'll start working on it.
But I think it's left, you know, it's got, like, you get, kind of, you watch more, you start seeing really where your money's going and what's being spent on it. So.
Great. Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
You want me to talk or are you gonna do it?
You can do the revenue part because I have no, that part doesn't make any sense to me.
So highway is on page nineteen at the bottom is the revenue portion. So I didn't touch the property tax number because obviously that's one we're gonna plug at the end once we figure out everything else. State aid, we just took last year's number because we're not sure what we will get, but we know it shouldn't be less than that.
If we do decide to take over segment two, that number will go up quite a bit because it will be a class one. We will get state aid for that.
All right, continue.
The sale of fuel, I don't ever want to count on that as revenue for the highway department. It is what it is. It's an expense on one side. It's, um, so I just put all zeros for that. We are not tracking the labor and equipment use by other departments. If the, if the highway department needs to do something for rec, it's still under the general fund umbrella, so why would we take the time to break it out by department when they're here? They have forty hours a week to work. Rec needs a ditch dug out. Do we really need to charge the rec and create more paperwork and busy work? So we've taken all of that out of here. And then overweight permits, I looked at last year. So the revenue lines are definitely gonna look different this year for highway. We're just trying to clean up and like I said, streamline, make it more efficient and easier for everyone within the town to be able to understand our financials instead of them being so complex. Okay, now you can go with your expenses.
Thanks. Lance, that's something on revenues too. Like, I, I think seeing the revenues again, like, I think Ann brings a good point up with all the, you know, the back and forth, but it should really reflect what it actually is, like, if we have overweight permits or, you know, what our tax revenue is. Maybe if there's an insurance claim that comes in from, you know, us having to fix guardrails or something, like, make it the real, you know, just the revenues that are actually coming in from outside. Just a little more realistic.
That's what page it is on?
We're on page twenty.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, so insert labor, slight increase, but I also have a employee that'll be getting the master skills rate. So that's, that was. Um, overtime, budget down hopefully. We'll have a rough winter and that can stay like that. Let me just highlight, like, my bigger stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, again, same with us, the communications and telephone. Lump to one, that's why that number looks real bad. Uh, let's see. Down, line striping. I honestly didn't realize I had six thousand dollars in that for this year, until I sat down to do the budget, so... So, I mean, I'll either either roll that over to next year or do it in the late, late spring, early summer. But I went with twelve thousand for, for next year. That gets us about six, well, I don't know what the pricing is nowadays, but it gets us, like, maybe five miles of road, if we can get straight for that amount. And I know, I guess last year, I think we guys were talking about doing it every other year. So, I mean, that'll... So, that'll get us going on with that. And then over to page twenty-two.
Speaking of, who's that guy we had doing our lines this year? Somebody new?
Those weren't ours. That was the state doing the class twos.
Oh, it was the state that did it.
Yeah, they do the class twos.
They better get some new equipment, too, then.
I think they were dealing with rain.
You should have seen over on the truck by my house.
It's statewide.
Were they doing it two in the morning?
They might have. Statewide, statewide, it was like that, yeah. Yeah, that's...
Yeah, that's all state. Paving. I bumped that back up to four hundred thousand. And, well, hopefully, Whipple Hollow will apply for a class-two grant again. Hopefully, we get that, because either way, that's gonna get paved this year, whether it's out of the budget or... We did not.
No, we didn't. Well, because they got one last year, the year before, so it's...
Year before.
It's usually every other year.
The other year, sometimes.
Yeah, so, hopeful for that. So, if we get that grant, we'll do Whipple Hollow and then with our budget, furnace from Route Seven to Hitchcock, Field Avenue and Randall Park. That'll lead up about half of it. And then I'd like to do some chip sealing on some other roads, like Elm Street and Doran Bridge, because they're, again, in good condition like Depot was.
Yeah.
Goes down quick. We don't have the maintenance of the shoulders, adding shoulder material, so it's actually even more of a cost-saving for us. So, that's paving. Wish. Crack sealing. I guess, well, I'd say I screwed up the budget from last year, remember? Because it's about five thousand to rent the machine, and then an additional eighteen hundred for a pallet of the material. So, that's why that didn't look good. And we went through one pallet, ended up actually going through a pallet and a half. I mean, we got, we had the machine for a month. Weather wasn't great, which worked in our favor. I think we got probably a week of use out of it. We did Depot, West Creek, portion of West Creek, Fire Hill, Elm Street. I think we got more mileage with us renting it than the ten thousand for two days' worth. Let you know in the spring if we did a good job, but...
Well, like with Depot, though, you know, you're able to do the crack sealing before the chip sealing came, so it's really sealed up that, that drive course, so the water won't get in it, make havoc with it, so...
Yeah, it's... Oh, yeah, it's well worth it, and we didn't mind, we didn't mind doing it.
It'll save us in the long run on that, that's for sure.
Yeah, the more we do it, the better we'll get. Uh, that, and then the gravel, bump that up. About a fair amount, but we have, several of our gravel roads really need to be resurfaced. So, that's the reason for that one. And, well, then I guess the, and the tires and the plow blades. If all goes well, there's only gonna be one small truck that needs tires next year. And then need to replace the grader blades. So, our plow blades, we're actually pretty good shape with for this year. So, that's why that got doubled out really to more realistic price. I mean, three thousand for tires and blades is real low, but... I think that's, yeah, pretty much it today, for major stuff anyway, so... So, then the total is about seven, seven and a quarter percent from last year increase. And then I skipped, you have questions about?
Well, the majority of that is really going into roads for paving and gravel, so...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's just a big improvement, so... Yeah, because I think we'll, we'll cut back the equipment fund, ten thousand dollars out of that, because we have a good chunk in there, and I don't need a truck for another year.
Yeah, no equipment.
I was gonna say, it better be going a year. You've trucked out for a while.
About four years.
Your machine down for a while.
Yeah.
So, one thing Chad has been doing, seeing as how it's not cold and like I asked him to, I might as well give him some praise for something. We, he had new lights to put into the garage down at the, you know, down on Depot Hill to swap them out to LEDs, which should be cost-effective, and the lighting is a thousand times better. So, hopefully, we'll see a little energy cost on that. I mean, we're just talking, too, about hopefully doing what needs to be done, because I think we have some old, what are they, like, metal halide lights or something in the town, in the highway garage, so...
Roger, probably original.
They're just energy suckers, so, you know, we're gonna do some more of that, that we can do here and there along the way, just to get, say, some energy costs on that, so, and better light for the guys, too.
Yeah. As they get older, it's not as good as it used to be.
So, we wanted, we wanted the ones down there to be done, because I think the LED credits are running out, like, this, like, the end of the year, I think they're done with it.
Yeah.
For the, what are, you know, the incentives, so... They're not new technology anymore, so they're getting rid of it. So, took advantage of that a little bit.
Any questions?
I have a off-subject question. The road by Rulis, did you ever get, do what we asked you to do to that, make it different? You did.
Yeah, we had a gravel there.
Okay.
Did you hear from him at all? Just curious.
We haven't heard from him since he was here, that, in April or March, whenever it was.
Yeah, no, we did get to that. I didn't, when Dave mentioned it, that you guys had decided that, and he let me know, and we took care of it that week, so...
Does it appear to be keeping the water off his driveway?
I didn't notice his driveway getting water, but, um...
Well, no, there was, you could see where it washed.
Yeah, I mean, it's that upper part. Yeah, I mean, it, yes.
Okay.
For now, yes.
We should probably take a, take a look after this weekend and just see.
Yeah, after, after Saturday.
Take another field trip.
Right over Sunday, you'll be able to...
Until Monday afternoon.
Yeah.
Monday afternoon.
Yeah. Because then I can fix it if it needs it.
We can just go look at it, too.
No, it's, um, that was up there just, end of last week, I guess.
I think that would've done it.
Went up through, and it's, it looks good. It's having up well.
For the amount of rain that we got this summer, the dirt, the gravel stayed in really good shape, for the most part. We didn't lose, we didn't lose really much.
No, no, we got lucky this year.
Yeah.
All right, any more questions?
We had talked about the covered bridge down there where that motorcycle. Get that jump in the center there, has anything been done to that, or...
Yeah, I put some material in there to ramp it.
And they, yeah, so I mean... They chip sealed right up to it anyway, so it really, yeah.
Yeah, they actually made it a lot better.
Jump there.
Yeah, yeah. But, yeah, if they stay on the boards, they shouldn't have any issues.
Fall's been a must.
But, yeah, there is, if they end up in the middle, there is easy access out.
Okay. Why the guy was in the middle, I don't know.
Running off the, running off the treads and dropping into the middle is kind of a challenge, I would think.
Nowadays, yeah, it's a lot harder to fall off those than it used to be.
Maybe he thought it was wet.
You might have been a little tipsy with those.
Who knows?
But, yes, that's, in sense of chip seal, it's actually approach in and out is a lot, lot better than what it used to be, so...
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, okay, uh, so Brent Gero complaints?
So, I thought Brent was gonna be here tonight, and he isn't, but Chad and I have already addressed the issue, and I'm not sure, it was, he was concerned about runoff, like, sediment coming down into his parking area. I mean, almost every driveway in town has that problem when it rains, if we're on a hill, so... We're looking at actually, one of the sections that was supposed to be paved, just north of there, that didn't get done. Chad's trying to line up a paver to see if we can get it done this fall.
Some grass were there, too, at one time.
No, no, it was always in its, and the gravel was always run down to that lot. But, yeah, hopefully, by the end of the month.
Is that, that's not gonna be hard to find somebody to do such a small section?
Um, I hope not. I talked to somebody today. It sounded positive that it'll get done.
Weather permitting, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm guessing right now it's, the complaint has resolved itself, but... If it comes up again, well, I know Chad and I talked about, and he said, you know, even the former owners in every spring would, you know, there was concern, so... Yeah.
All right, um, so, but...
I guess I already did the second.
I was gonna say, we already discussed the police contract services.
More to come on that.
Yep. Um, and then, all right, so we have multiple policies. Has everyone had a chance to read? There are ones we've read before and just never signed off on.
So, these came, well, when we did all those policies in the beginning, so, most of these were from recommendations from auditors, and our new auditors want them to, and really Ann has a little more information on, but they're, they're more auditor requested than...
Okay.
Well, they're also insurance company requested. Our insurance company, when we had to do the renewal, we found that they were asking if we had a return-to-check policy. There is no written policy here, so if somebody repeatedly bounced checks, they didn't necessarily get charged for them, they weren't necessarily shut off from being able to keep giving rubber checks, as I call them. This would make it so that they'd have to pay thirty-five dollars every time there is an NSF check, and then after a certain number of them, sorry, you have to be cash, bank check, money order.
Yep.
Something solid and substantial that we're not having to pay so much.
Okay.
So, I will make a motion that we accept all five of these.
I'll second that, because I wrote it nevermind.
They look, yeah, and I mean, if the auditors, if that's what we gotta do, it's what we gotta do.
Yep.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Assessors, errors, and omissions. Everyone had a chance to look at that?
Yes, that trailer's been gone for years.
Yeah, so I guess it was just...
Trees like this where it used to be, so...
Right, we were trying to find clarification on what happened to it and where it might have gone, or if it was just demolished. We found out from the homeowner that has been gone approximately eight years. So, I went to Lisa Wright and was like, we know it's been gone eight years, we have a tax bill on it. Is there anything we can do for at least this fiscal year, and then the rest of it's gonna have to go to Board of Abate?
Okay, yep.
It was their responsibility to notify the county in the beginning, I assume.
Yeah, I've been doing a lot of research, trying to clean up old delinquent taxes, and this is one of those parcels that I've been researching.
Yeah, we've got a few that have been lingering. They're either gonna have to, like, have abated or something to get, to get them off the books, because it just keeps accruing interest, and it's, it's not collectible.
It does, of course.
Some of, it happens, so...
Okay, so, for this year, maybe you have any issue with this? I'll make the motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, all right. Anything on the orders?
Can you find them?
No, in alphabetical order, then I love it.
Yeah.
I saw nothing of note. Okay. Send those down sometime.
Okay, I'll, I'll just start sending the whole packet on there.
There's two, there's two arrows in the picture, so it's not as tight as I was.
I don't think there was a personal omissions page, so I'm gonna give you my specific slide.
I don't know about this one, Matt. Doesn't need our signature, doesn't need it.
Some of them do. That one, if you can just sign the bottom of that, I forgot to put the lines.
Each without lines, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. I forgot the lines.
Great with you.
All right.
You can sign about me.
Oh, thanks.
Ellen, you might not have to sign Joe, that might be just the chair.
Too late.
Too late.
Whatever.
I think you missed all that, Joe, but anyway.
Already in motion.
Try that one.
Yeah, it was a bunch of lines, so...
Put the arrows on omissions beside Joe, we just need to make sure he signs that one, because it doesn't matter.
Please, I'm...
It's more than, more than a girl.
Yeah, it is.
That one right there.
All the policies.
That's five right there.
I don't think one of my signatures looks alike.
Not supposed to.
I want that's the arrow omissions one.
We've gone from beat up to...
So, you can say, oh, that wasn't me that signed that.
Is Hank's rat back, though?
Huh?
Is Hank, Hank's rat back?
I think so, yes. Little sucker.
One more after that.
One more, holy cow.
You're just doing the wrong job. You don't, I only have to sign one.
Well, one more.
I think so.
Okay.
There's one more coming.
I'm not taking it.
I know.
Calm down.
He claimed it's not legal, so...
No problem, no, no rubber stamps.
Probably a good gesture, initially.
Yeah.
All right, that does, and the open part of this meeting, before we go into executive.